........................
Something's wrong here.
Alright, so one, uh, way to continue, ready? We go, 1.06, student report. Matt, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, who's going on at the high school. This Thursday is the STIR symposium. STIR, for those of you who don't know, stands for Science, Technology, Investigative Research. All the students, all the STIR students will discuss their projects and research that they have done throughout their years in the STIR program. And the setup will be outside of the high school library. The Rockland Board of Elections has rescheduled their visit to register seniors to vote to next Wednesday on April 25th. Also, on April 25th is the Band Bananza, which is the district-wide band concert. Following night, April 26th, is the String Extravaganza, which is district-wide string concert. I like this one better, but I'm a little biased, because I play the choral. And finally, May 1st is the Top 10% Reception. That also happens to be the date of the next board meeting, so as well, I will not be here. But my replacement for next year, I think it's Maddie Nikpon, will be here to report. That's all for tonight, have a great night, everyone.
Okay, 1.07, sorry, 1.07, sorry. 1.07, Chairman, take a motion to accept, 1.07, associated.
No.
You're on.
They're not attached. Oh. You mean the head. I can't open. Sorry, you asked me, I can't open. Do you look over top? Okay, real quick. It's on the computer, so I don't know if it's on. Yeah, it might be. I just saw, I just saw that stuff.
Oh, you're signed in?
No, I'm signed in, I have no network problem, but they're not attached online.
Alright, so, alright, 1.07.
We have a National Merit Students Recognized, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Adams, Board of Education, it's my honor to introduce to you our National Merit Commended Students, as well as our National Merit Finalists. We had some last-minute cancellations for students with conflicts. However, I'd like to begin with our National Merit Commended Students. The following National Merit Commended Students place in the top 5% of the 1.5 million students across the country who entered the competition through their perplomence on the PSAT, and have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. Our first student is Luke Dorian, who's not here this evening. William Function, he's here, come on up. Alright, hang out here, William, we're gonna take your picture. We're gonna put you on the spot. Abigail Gandon, who's also not here, and Dustin Lee, those are our National Merit Commended Students. I'd also like to, for the record, identify our National Merit Finalists, we did have one at Suffolk High School this year, he's not here this evening. Crew issue, so. The following National Merit Finalist placed in the top 1% of the 1.5 million students who qualified through their performance on the PSATs. And being selected as a finalist opens the door to many scholarships through the National Merit Clearinghouse. And this student is to be recognized for distinguished performance and academic accomplishment. That student is Jacob Halfman, who's not here to see you. Thank you, if we could maybe take a picture with Will.
Congratulations, to your family as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go to 1.07, 1.07, the minutes of the meeting, April 10, 2018, Chairman, take a motion to accept, was associated. Clark, second, Teresa?
Okay.
Please still say. Paul? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, abstentions? Public participation, this is public participation, acting action items, only those are the items up on the board over here, that would be 2.01 through 2.16. 2.01 through 2.16. This session will last no more than 30 minutes. Each person would like to speak on any of those items, they step up to the podium, state their names, full affiliation. Maybe some contact information, so we can get back to you, let you know this is not a back-and-forth discussion. But we will get back to you, contact information. Pursuant to policy 1230, 420, what was the last one? 2340. Please refrain from speaking with respect to any disrespectful attitude. Action items. Alright, so, I will scroll that portion of the meeting. 1.10. Chairman, take a motion to adjourn this meeting for terms of conducting the budget workshop. After which, temporarily after which, we will come back to the meeting and start with 3.01. So it's a temporary adjournment of the meeting for however long it takes for the budget workshop. Chairman, take a motion to adjourn for such purposes. Amani, second. Clark? Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay, meeting adjourned.
Temporary.
Temporary.
Alright, good evening, all.
Suffolk Central School District Board of Education, meeting Tuesday, 17, 2018, starting with action items, 2.0 through, sorry, 2.02 through 2.16. I have not been asked to pull any of those items. So there was, just 2.04 was the only thing that was added, not for us, or anything else?
2.04 is the policy that was presented last week, there were no changes from last week to this week. This is the one that deals with graduation ceremonies, so that more kids have the legal opportunity to participate.
That was a state requirement?
That is a state requirement, and it's a required policy.
First part of it was the policy committee putting the wording together? Yes? The first page was the policy committee, it's not required by state, first page?
Correct.
Okay, that meaning we're on the board?
It was March 27th.
This is a mandatory, this one we have to get it correct, this policy has to be done.
Who was in attendance?
Yeah, who was in attendance?
So it was myself, Carrie, Dr. Adams, Steve, or, or Steve Bronson. And we had Andy come in to give us some information on the policies, and I think that was it.
Teresa Soldi.
Oh, Teresa Soldi, sorry, she raised her hand. And I'm always paying for it right here. Sorry. Anything else, so 2.02 through 2.16, Chairman, take a motion to accept those associated.
I'll admit that.
Clark, second. Teresa, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay, so 3.01 has to do with this wonderful little plaque.
Lee, where? So before I start explaining this award has an acronym like in every sentence. So I'm gonna try and explain it and not get lost in the acronym. But the award we received is from Lyric. That's the part of Bosse's that provides all our technology support. And so, the award is for being an outstanding innovative partner with them. And it is, the name of the award is a TEL Award, Transforming Education Through Leadership and Learning. And it was awarded for our work in a structure that they created this year, which was called the CS, Computer Science Scheme, which is an acronym we all know here, Academy. And so it's been a great opportunity, it's an opportunity for a group of our teachers and administrators to work together with the goal of articulating a K8 vision and spoken sequence for STEAM. So these are sort of the guaranteed curriculum activities that we're saying all of our students are gonna have between kindergarten and eighth grade. We're gonna guarantee some of these experiences related to STEAM. I do want to mention the members of the co-board, it's been a pretty significant time investment, a bit of time for the administrators, a very significant amount of time for the teachers. They have, I think their last one is next, well, their second-to-last one, I think, is next week. And then we have one, a meeting where we're all together later in May. And it's all told, the teachers have given about six days of their time to participate, so I want to make sure I mention everyone. In addition to myself, Brian Fox from the middle school, Dr. Lloyd from Slotesburg, and Dr. Casaldo from PPS. And the teachers on the team are Eleanor Cerny from Anavelo, Tom DiFabio from the middle school, Andrea Edwards from Cherry Lane, Steve Pashley from Connor, Liz Ralston from Viola, and Peggy Sheehy from the middle school. So it's been a great opportunity, it's, at this stage, it's sort of the think-tank stage. And really, we have great teachers, great minds, really, as, the award is for being an innovative partner, it's really about driving that innovation and getting those ideas. So it's been a wonderful experience, and Lyric presented us with this award just before the break.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
I shouldn't have said that.
I'll just, I'll just say hi.
Not the action.
Right, I'm the edge.
Don't do too much of a close. Thank you, thank you, Lee. Okay, 4.01, discussion item is the policy manual update, Teresa?
Yep, I asked the mic to you. So we got on to 27, thank you for looking up the date, Dr. Adams. So for one thing that we didn't supply you with, which will be forwarded to you by tomorrow, is that good, Dr. Adams? Usually when we do policy changes, updates, we put the policy changes that were made, etc., so this sheet, it's a guide to help you know what the changes were, as well as the policies themselves, which were all included here. This is considered the first reading, so as always, don't forget to read them. If you have any questions over the next few days to a week, email them to me, call me, whatever's easier for you. We'll try to, we'll get every answer that we get a question to prior to the next meeting, so that you can vote at the second reading with all the questions and answers for each policy. So that's kind of usually how we handle it, and if there are any other questions regarding our policies.
That's my own particular take, and this is, we're getting late in the year, it's May, we vote late at ease, we haven't really voted much on policies, a lot up to this point. There's gonna be a board change, I'm not gonna be here, I'll be out here, the swallow's office is gonna be out here as well. There's new board members coming in, I really think, that it's so late in the year, and here's my own personal take, in my position, as I was chief when I came in, I didn't want people putting things when I came in. And when my boards changed, my village administration, they generally don't put anything in at the end, when they know new people are gonna be coming in. And it's definitely people, by the matter of people voting. I just think the suggestion would be, whoever comes on, the new board members, have a say what we're voting on, it's gonna affect them, it's not gonna affect me, I'm God. So I think they should have a say, unless it's mandatory, I don't think we should vote on it, and that's just my personal take. I don't want to handcuff somebody else coming up that's gonna sit in my seat. And that's just some experience of my priest career and my career since I've been on the school, I should say. That's just my personal take.
We can ask the board, I personally think that we should move forward and keep.
Well, that's fine, my vote's not to have.
Every other year with other board members and other chairs of the committee, the policies are here. Policies can be reviewed anytime, which is the beautiful thing about policies, if we, if the whole board agrees, they can always bring it back for review to whoever's gonna chair the policy committee in the future. But that would be a decision that I would say, what do you guys want to do? I don't know enough to report, but otherwise, I think we should keep cracking along unless somebody else has a concern, or the majority, I should say.
Do you have a question?
It's a discussion, right? Anybody else is waiting?
Well, I understand Clark's point, but the fact that you say that the policies can be reviewed and changed at any time, that means that it's, that they're always gonna be fluid, and we can make changes. And, you know, we can say that this is the way they are as of May 2nd, or 1st, or whatever the date is, but then sometime in September, we could go through and through them and make changes, and then they gotta be changed, so.
And the other thing I would just point out, you know, some of these are minor revisions, and you, once you get this sheet, you know, and you've seen the policies, some of them have two highlighted sentences in them, but minor changes by and large. So again, I would, I would ask Dr. Adams's opinion, but, you know, I don't think this is anything earth-shattering that's going to be an issue, and again, my opinion is move forward, because we've done the work, we looked into it, we've worked with the people. And if anybody else thinks otherwise, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, perhaps, perhaps, that's that chart, excellent, and, 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 maybe it's just easily discerning what changes were made. I know it's highlighting stuff, so I don't know, maybe perhaps after looking at that, you know, we're not voting on it, it's just discussion.
This is, this is the time to make a question. For example, if you look at the Code of Ethics, literally, there's one, two sentences? And then the bottom piece at the last page, so, again, not, again, that's a word, that's, that's up to all of us to make decisions, we have a majority. But we, we can see how everybody feels after they get this attachment, I just, I just feel that the work was put in, we need to kind of keep it going. And we haven't had a lot of policy changes this year. Because to be quite honest with you, we did so much over the last two years, revising almost all of them, these were some of the ones dangling out there, or something new that came up, that really needed to be looked at, so that's where this came up. There's actually a couple that are still in progress that are.
I got a question regards to the executive sessions. To vote, the change is to change, it looks like, to vote, to go into executive session shall be detailed enough for the public to understand the topic we'll be discussing without disclosing specifics. Discussion, executive session shall be limited to the topic identified, no problem. But this is the part I just don't understand legally. Individual board members acting on their own should not disclose matters discussed in executive session. However, the board acting as a whole, they decide to disclose such information where disclosure is not prohibited under law. I run executive session in my department, how can one person not say something, seven can? Just doesn't make sense to me.
No, if, if, I can't.
I don't understand that, that's.
As an individual board member, you have no authority to do anything on your own. What this is saying is, as a, as a board, as a unit, one unit, all seven of us, if all seven of us decide, pursuant to law, of course, because most of it is an executive session, we can't talk.
That's what I'm saying, that's my point, right.
But if there's something that we can talk about, although it wasn't an executive session, initially an executive session discussion, in order to talk about it, it has to be something that the entire board is, or really, a majority.
It's gotta be all seven, not a majority.
It has to be the board acting as, the board acting as a whole.
See, we can't take votes.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I don't understand.
That's very specific right area.
We actually can't take votes in executive session, they have to be done in a specific way, we don't, we don't.
Because we've asked in the past, we have.
And this is a risky area where you open the door, and that's just an example of some of how, and it could be two lines, as Teresa said, but it could have significant results. And it's really how the board, the policies are, have to be taken lightly, one word could be changed, and it would have a total meaning, the community changed. So, being that policies are how we govern the Board of Education as a whole, and actually make decisions of, you know, governing the administration as well, they are important changes. One word, two sentences, they are important changes. I'm concerned about that one, I'm concerned about other ones, but I want to start by asking, this whole entire school year, how many policies have, policies have been changed?
I have to look back at my notes, we have had a couple meetings.
There's no recall voting on any policies until tonight.
I think, I think this is the first batch that we've brought since the last.
The first one, and brought in, in April, mid-April, who just got his post, with an election that's, what's the urgency?
Because it was a matter of us being able to actually get meeting schedule, this is, I think, the second meeting we've had this year. We had one over the summer prior to the school year, again, I'd have to look at it on the plan, if I had right now. More discussion items, there are things, as I said, there's still policies that are being worked on, that isn't complete, that we were discussing, getting more details on. So this is, this is, this came out of what the most recent batches were, or what we thought needed to be updated.
Up to the end of last year, we have revamped a ton of, I don't mean we, we had a board vote, but the policy committee brought forward with administration a ton of policies for the past two years, and, you know, that I witnessed us voting on. This year, we've had none, zero, until this point. What happened?
I don't know if it has zero, I'd have to go back and look at dates for all the policies, and the means we've had, we've had, I'd have to look back at dates, but, Amani, we had a ton in the past. There weren't a lot, these came up as things that we should review, or things that need to be reviewed pursuant to a recent decision of the Commission of Education.
What prompted that one, for example?
The Executive Board of Employee Code of Ethics.
They said you.
That's what I'm saying, Amani, this has information as to why it was revised.
But this one doesn't.
Well, what are you talking about specifically? That you just asked about? Yeah, no, this, this was not required.
So what prompted that as an emergency when the year's winding down?
Why was that, I can say it's an emergency.
So, so then, there's no urgency, because the board, that's, is going to be totally different in a couple weeks, so, in respect to.
That's why we can have discussions.
Including, you're right, a policy committee chair, yourself, and another member of the policy committee, Chief Osborne.
Right.
Will not be participating in the process anymore, and supposedly two other members, either existing or new, will be a part of the process. Now, that's work that shouldn't be rushed at the end of the school year without enough, you know, research of why do we need to change that policy. And in, in my opinion, and that's my opinion, any policy that should be changed should fit one or two things. Number one is either an instruction that came from State Education Department, or, you know, it's a requirement, right, it's a legal requirement. Or it's going to benefit the students of this district in one way or another, in one way, shape, or form, or improve the, basically, the governance of the function, the function of the district, which benefits the students eventually. So, there's no explanation for this one example, for example, why would we do this, and what's the point, and what prompted that? And it's no time, frankly, to have these discussions with a school break coming up in April, and then one meeting in May, and then we have no much. In respect to the process and the community, and, and those who get elected by the community, I feel there's no urgency to do that, unless there's a, there's a legal requirement, or, or an instruction from State Education that we are prompted to do urgently.
Okay, I understand that, but going back to what I said in the past, we have all the members of the board that can give their input. If we, if we have questions, ask questions, if we decide that we don't want to vote on it, we don't have to vote on it. But the work was done, the policies were submitted, and if we choose to, as a board, not go forward, that's up to the board. But the work has been done, so regardless of how many meetings we've had, or how many policies we've put through this year, the policy committee had revised quite a few, and there weren't a lot. And hopefully, there won't be a lot going forward, it might be minimal based on need or requirement, but this, this is, this is complete at this point. I would recommend looking at this, reading through them, reading through this, and then if there are any questions, and if we decide not to, to vote down the policy, or to make a different decision as we go forward, that's up to you guys.
I just don't think that rushing the process this quickly is the right way.
I don't feel, this is the process we've taken, we've had, we've used since inception of the policies. We, the policy committee meets, the policy committee does its work, the policy committee makes recommendations, these specifically is actually what the law requires with respect to the executive session. Because there's a lot of districts who don't put enough into their executive session motion, and we've always felt that you need to put a little bit more in, you can't put too much in, because obviously.
The portion about sharing information, that's not core.
The part of, the part about sharing information is also a legal issue, so Steve Bronson, the attorney, who attends almost every meeting, provides great input into the policies and some legal issues that we could face, or, or are facing, or what have you. So, again, the policy. So again, the policy committee, just like every committee, policy committee, they meet, they go through it, they get information from the attorney, they get information from NISPA, they get information from anybody who has relevant, you know, knowledge in whatever policy we're dealing with. We analyze it, we look at it, we discuss it at length, and we recommend the change to it. That change then is given to the board on one night, and then it's, that's the first meeting, and then on the second night is the second meeting to vote on it. So the process has always been the same. I think maybe, and I, you know, and I appreciate the discussion, I think maybe after the chart, look at it, see what changes there are. There are certain policies here with respect to graduation that we really shouldn't be voting on in spite of the policy that we voted on just now before seventy-two. Does that affect these other two graduation requirement policies? So again. If I could add, though, even the one that we're just discussing, where it says executive sessions, this, this came up pursuant to a recent decision of the Commission of Education. And it gives you detail here, that's why I'm saying, we wanted you to have this beforehand, I didn't realize that you didn't get it at the last meeting since I wasn't here, or that it wasn't attached, so again.
It's first on our scene, yeah.
So again.
First on our.
Okay, so that's, but this is the same process that we've always had. The first reading, we give this to you. Do you supply any?
Yeah, but we, we don't do no policies, and then at the end of the year, vote them all in one vote. We don't do that. That was the practice last year.
We have them all voted in season at a time.
Yes, but throughout the school year, spread out.
There's still policies that aren't finished, that will not be part of this.
So my question is, can you separate them by what is required and what is not? Can they be separated that way?
So that's, that's all up to me. I recommend the policies that we submit, like, if you wanna vote them down, you vote them down. That's what I recommend.
Let's continue. Paul?
Yeah, on, on September nineteenth, we went through a whole bunch of policies, and we did make changes, and we did go to.
They have to look at it by this hour.
Yeah.
We try to meet four times a year, because we get from NISPA, we get the alerts quarterly. Obviously, sometimes, especially this, this second, this last meeting, it was very difficult to get the parties together, it was very difficult.
Sure.
So, again.
So that would be an outcome of that summer meeting that Teresa was talking about, so we vote it in September, but then, like, we haven't had anything policy related throughout the course. Nothing.
Well, I'll throw the other one to you.
Oh, no, no.
That's why, you know, it was surprising that these would come, you know, in front of us so late in the year, and just before the break, and, yeah.
Also, we didn't look at this as far as timing of the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, the ends of the year. Policies come up, we have a meeting, because we tried to get a date to be on, two, two months before, I think we had this meeting date, because there was definitely conflicts. So, I'll, I'll leave it up to you guys, what you wanna do.
And even honestly, like, I mean, I'm going over, I just think for executive session, maybe someone's could use some instruction, because I'll be honest with you, every time we've ever voted up to vote in executive session, we were told we couldn't go. I'm the first one to say we were told that, because many times, came up, we were told you can't vote in exec, take the vote in executive session, and we couldn't, and you said, I, I never knew that. And that's something we probably should have been told by.
The chairman.
Yeah, I, I never knew that, till now, thirteen years in this board.
This is why we're cautious, some of them.
That's what I'm saying. We probably should know that, though, like, that's something like that, I don't think anybody knew that. We missed. No, we missed.
Okay.
We could, but it's.
Keep going.
So, alright, so that's, well, Teresa will send out the, the.
We'll send out the chart.
Send out the chart. You know, if you guys have any questions about those policies, as per practice that we've had.
How much time?
Send them to Teresa. How much time do you need to question? Please, we thought they'll go away. So, I'm sorry, I mean, if they're gonna go away. So whenever, so prior to the next meeting, will be no time for me to get the answers.
We had a break, we have another one.
Unless we have snow, snow day, we're chairman.
Hey, we're still going.
So we're gonna get it tomorrow, so I would say.
Slipping along the way.
So that I have time to get the answers for the next meeting by next week.
I've got some of them here. Whatever questions you have on that.
Are any others in progress? Because Dr. Adams last week mentioned ten to twelve.
There's a pair of policies, or will be a pair of policies. It's fifty-two eighty regarding, it's called interscholastic activities. It's really kind of an amalgamation of interscholastic and the concussion management protocol. And so to make things clearer for the coaches, the recommendation is to separate those. Have one policy just for interscholastic athletics, and the other one, concussion management protocol. And separating that and making sure that not too much was taken out.
When you separate them, it's not gonna A and a B, or?
It'll be fifty-two eighty and fifty-two eighty point one.
Right.
And we did discuss those, Amani, at the last meeting as well, they're just not ready to be presented. Well, we, we don't have them, so.
That's why I have to ask.
They're not on. They're not on. Right. They're not ready.
They're not there.
So, but again, we.
You're talking about, you're talking about when would we have those, and when would we vote on them? Because you don't wanna have them in a meeting and then have different people voting on them. So, like, when would you?
When they're ready. Right now, they're not ready to be presented. Otherwise, they'd be torn as fat, because we did discuss.
I'm familiar with the process, because I participated in it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we don't, we don't get to see the information until the first reading. So a lot of times, it's, it's too rushed to form an opinion, and to ask questions and get responses before you actually vote.
Well, then, when the, when the agenda goes up, you know, four days.
And that process also, just for the record, had changed recently, it wasn't that way. The second reading was only a second reading and not a vote, and then it became a vote as well. Just giving you the history.
I don't know, that's not, that's not how, that's not how we got, but that. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to the next item. Right here, we are at five point zero one. If you could, please. Public participation, this is public participation, participation at any school district business. This session will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please step up to the podium, state your names, school affiliation. Each person who addresses the board will have three minutes timer that's going on up there. Again, it's not a question and answer type, it's a thirty-minute period, but if you need some contact information, the appropriate person, personnel would get back to you with the information you're pressing. That being said, preserve the policy twelve thirty fourteen hundred and thirty through forty. Please refrain from making any comments in respect to any district staff, personnel, or students.
My name is Andrea Jaffe. I have resigned in Suffolk. I'm a non-public school parent, and most importantly, a taxpayer. I did not plan to speak this evening, but some of the meeting events prompted me to get up here. I am also an accountant. Excuse me, I would like to volunteer for any committee that has put forward regarding